...go from one room, one side of the room, to the other side of the room. So, the candidates won't be answering the questions first all the time, they'll go back and forth. While they are answering the three questions that the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce government presented, you in the audience can write down questions and pass them to Shelley, is that there waving your hand? Get the questions to her. Now, we will screen these questions for appropriateness, we will screen them for duplication, and please be brief in your question, as brief as you can. Our screeners may paraphrase that question a little bit. And if you two want to move down here closer, that works for me also. Rick, Carol, or you can come all the way around, whatever you want to do. But anyway, so please answer your questions. We are going to end this at eight o'clock, and so be prepared for that. The candidates, I think, are willing to stay around if you have that burning question that didn't get answered. We will try to get to all of your questions, but if we can't, I think the candidates will stay around and answer your questions afterwards. But we will end at eight o'clock. First question, and we'll start right here with you, Ms. Miller. What do you think are the three major issues facing Lebanon today, and what are your suggested solutions?
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the chamber. Thank you for coming out to the end of the time. Jason, I hope decidedly to wait too many notes for 90 seconds. I believe the first issue is continued economy in Lebanon. One of the, and it's been talked about a lot, is the URBs that some people don't agree with, but I believe they have provided infrastructure in the city. The mayor talked about the new jobs, and that's true. And really, all of the examples that's been talked about are here because of the underground utilities and infrastructure needed to provide services to those businesses. I'd like to develop a closer relationship with the business community. Right now, the Lebanon Chambers Treaty, a venue for vendors in the county to talk to prime contractors that come to town, and that's brand new. I'm not even sure it's been announced fully. So, the city...
Now it has.
Now it has. The city, I think, should continue to be a partner in that effort. And then another one is to partner with the medical school. I'll wait 30 seconds, okay. Partner with the many schools whenever we can. And also, I'd like us to sit down with the Deila, who's the current police community services manager, if you will, and really talk to her, see how the city can go deeper into the lives of people in Lebanon. We have a high percentage of citizens at risk, and I think if we were better educated as a council, we would be better able to come to make real change in those people's lives.
And again, I might mention at this time, we're giving the candidates 90 seconds to answer this. Candidates, please be aware, Barry down there with the yellow card, 60 seconds, and the stop sign will come up at 90 seconds. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
The question is, what do you think are the three major issues facing Lebanon today, and what are your suggested solutions?
For me, public safety is number one, and would that goes on properly staffed police force? Our police has long been understaffed and are stretched in to cover the demands of our rural population. Ensuring properly staffed police force would put more officers on patrol in our streets, more detectives investigating serious crimes, and more crime prevention programs for our citizens. Saying that we support our police isn't enough. We need to show them that we support them by giving them the resources they need to be successful. Number two for me is a lack of activities and infrastructure that attracts working families. When people decide where to locate their family, they look at many things, but most towards them are the safety of the community, the schools, the local economy, and activities that are available for their family. If we want these vacant homes to become occupied, we need to provide families with the activities they're looking for. Improve parks and recreation, thrive in community groups, activities promoting community music and arts events. These are important to current and future citizens of Lebanon. The city must collaborate with as many local entities as possible to provide as many opportunities as possible for our citizens. And finally, a strong local economy. When we have a safe community that's offering opportunities for its citizens to enjoy their lives to the fullest, a strong economy will be much easier to provide for. Offering small businesses opportunities by supporting a thriving historic downtown area, as well as enticing industry with shovel-ready sites will allow Lebanon to grow responsibly.
Good evening, everyone. Three major issues for me, one of which, of course, does everyone say with me, the water issue. Obviously, Paul has outlined that. I've come up with a plan that is parallel to the local utilities company. What they do is they have their volunteer basis of employees as well as citizens round up their bill, or donate a little extra. That money is then used for the elderly and disabled who cannot afford electricity, and I would like to try to institute something like that for the water. Crime, big umbrella issue. Specifically, I think we need not only the police force, everyone believes in that and more of that, but go to the schools and create after-school programs, be a volunteer base, I'll do it myself if I have to, to encourage kids to do safety patrol, to be, have a junior government. I think it'd be great for the council to be able to go to all the schools, even the little people's schools, and help them create local government, have those kids come to our meetings, tell us what they're doing. We go to them, and that way they have ownership in their community. Lastly, just the negative relation right now with the city government and its citizens. I hate to say that, but there's no transparency, there's no accessibility, a little bit more reactive and proactive. I want to be accessible to everybody, since I would be a public servant, I would want to serve you. So, via Twitter, Facebook, Gmail, once-a-month meetings and having coffee. I think that the council meeting should be sideboard on the net. I think the council members and the mayor should take turns writing update columns in Express every week.
Good evening, I'm Rebecca Grisell, running for Dory in Ward 2. And I think that there are a lot of issues and a lot of opportunities in the next few years in Lebanon. So, if I had to pick three, I've thought about that, and water's on the top of everybody in town right now. Water rates are very expensive, and I think both Paul and Ken kind of spoke a little bit articulately on where we're at, that I'm not sure there are great solutions, but somebody brought to me the idea of having a citizen committee. You know, we have a Parks Committee that really focuses on parks and kind of creates a vision around parks and things creatively around that. We have the same thing in other departments. It'd be nice to have a citizen committee who really focused on water issues. Just an idea. And again, economic development in Lebanon, we've done really well, and I'm really proud of where we've come in Lebanon with our economics. Oh, I can't fast. But just making sure that we keep our growth well thought out and controlled. And I think, one of the biggest things I believe we have a problem with right now is really negative and litigious leadership within the council, and so I'm hoping we can get beyond that soon.
Go. It's Helen. I'm Ray Wildin. My first point out of these three is the increasing cost that citizens have to pay for services to live in Lebanon, and the economics caused increases in jobs and wages may feel impossible for someone to pay the increase while receiving smaller paychecks. The solution, any time there is a request to expand, the city funds that exceed $15,000, budgeted or not, must be authorized by the city council. The city council must decide if the request benefits the citizens, safety, health, or well-being. If it doesn't, the request should be denied. The city council has the right type of budget purse strings, first string, just as the taxpayers do, with their own budget. The city employs hostile work environment, number two. This is a hard one to evaluate when I'm not personally on call. I've had a number of employees, past employees, inviting me about the hostile work environment on the condition I do not give out their names. The city administration not providing the city council with any information... You turn me on. All complaints, I've heard say the environment has been in place for several years and always involves human resource officer. The solution I suggest is that they reassign the HR officer and improve on the city employee's working condition. I wrote this before receiving the investigation summary from Star. Her report showed that she was getting paid to show that there was no hostile work environment. She quoted, "My investigation did find evidence that the city employees..."
Three major issues facing Lebanon today, and then suggested solutions. Population of city Lebanon is nominal, 15,000. Let you look around this room for a moment, and what you see here right now is not 15,000 citizens. So, I would say probably the single major issue facing Lebanon and probably most of our public policy bodies is public equity. I'm hoping you sitting here tonight are the choir preaching to them, right? Most citizens don't care to get involved, find out what's going on, and I don't think the more citizen committees are going to solve that. I do think one of the things that needs to happen is better understanding of what the city does on the part of citizens and exactly what that means, primarily is financial. How many of you, let's see, show hands, are aware that the city budget is 30-something million this year? How many of you are aware that the city budget this year is approximately 50 million or something? Both of you are correct, which is... It's both, and the difference happened, and the reason it's a different number has to do with accounting law. It's not clear, it's difficult to understand what that means, and I'm not going to try to explain it tonight, but the citizens of Lebanon need both at the city council level and at the public level an understanding of what that budget means in practical, everyday terms. To me, that is one of the fundamental issues that needs to be addressed in a very short time.
Might as well hang on to that mic there when you're serving people on that end. And we had this question from the audience, and I'll ask you real quick. When you address us on the next question, will you tell us both, Ward, your run for this?
Ray Wildin and I are both running for the city council seat, Wade, that's open in Ward 1.
And our second question is, how do you rate the city's economic development efforts in the last few years, and what areas will you improve?
In Ward, I think the city's economic development effort in recent years has been My question about economic development is simply this, is more better? To me, economic development, growth, more jobs, et cetera, are only better if the existing citizens end up paying less, costing less, improving their life in cause of the economic development. If we do a major economic development project, invite a new major industrial citizen to town, and do a lot of infrastructure development at some cost, and that cost requires everybody else to pay more than before, then, to me, that's not necessarily good. Economic development should spread the tax bases, drop the per capita tax base. Most of the projects, I think, we've done in recent years haven't met that goal. I think that's the standard that we should look for, not all comers, but those who are good for Lebanon. And so, I think when we do economic development, that is the one question I would keep first and foremost in the view of the city council and also the public. Is this particular economic development good and why?
Would you like me to repeat your question, Rick?
Well, I got the question. I'm Ray Wildin, Ward 1. How do you rate the city's economic development effort in the last few years, and what areas would you improve? The city chamber always gives themselves a glowing assessment of the economic development efforts without actually seeing a technical analysis of effectiveness of Lebanon's economic development efforts. I cannot rate it. For example, is there determination of city unemployment rate? If so, how does it compare with the county, state, and national rates? What proportion of the new jobs that are claimed to be created by the initial ready projects reported in Lebanon are held by Lebanon residents? How many exactly are there of these jobs? How does that number compare with the demand for jobs? What are the salary levels of these jobs? How much taxpayer subsidy of the job creation would require on per-job basis? Without the effort of continually determining these parameters, all claims of positive economic development are not known. What is the cost of these jobs? It appears that the city's outreach to development may now be showing its real cost as an example of the fire district's revenue dropped due to the URB caused compression. Even the county commissioners had to ask Lebanon to control itself on the URB objections.
Again, Rebecca Grisell, Ward 2. And I think we've done amazing things, and it's been a really, I mean, we all know globally, it's been a really challenging economic time, and still during a time like that, you know, when Lowe's first announced that it was going to come to town, you could have conversations with people, and people were excited. I mean, that was a, people had goosebumps, people were like, man, it's been a long time since something happened in Lebanon. If you've been in Lebanon, I've been, my family moved here in 1975, so I was just fairly born. And so, you know, we saw mills shut down, we saw a lot of negative, Lebanon finally had a positive upswing. And I don't think it's the role of government to necessarily dictate what businesses come in. I think it's the role of the government at the city level to have a business-friendly environment that's inviting. But you know what, I sure could use a good salad bar, and I would love to tell somebody that they must bring a good salad bar to...
Loves the salad. My name is Dory Ford, I'm also running for city council, Ward 2. I echo everyone in its success, obviously, we can't deny it, the Med School, the Med Center. And there is something to the salad analogy, because I think it'd be lovely to look forward to the 21st century economically at the same time retaining its historical value downtown and providing better business opportunities for folks to come in with shops that we'll use. We have a glut of specific types of shops, you know what I'm talking about. And again, no salad bar, correct? I would love to see a little more diversity economically downtown and preserve it, and I think that would bring folks back down there and want to spend their money there as well as the larger stores. Cut down on the strip mall mentality. Last time I lived in, it became a giant strip mall, and had absolutely no job whatsoever. And I really, really don't want to see that for Lebanon.
Jason Boland, Ward 3. If I was going to grade our economic development over the past few years, I would have to give it a solid B. In light of the economic situation since 2008, Lebanon's kept its head above the water, but staying afloat just isn't enough. There are a few areas that I would improve upon, but before you begin to make progress, you have to have two things in place. First is a goal, and second is a team that can work together to achieve that goal. I firmly believe that our city has some major internal personnel problems that should be addressed before any long-term planning is addressed. This recent investigation simply put a key into the lock. What we really need to do is kick the door wide open on this. First of my agenda would be a culture audit involving all city employees, from the city manager right down to the newest hiring. It's impossible to fix a problem without knowing exactly what it is, and a culture audit would give clear answers to the city council on where the problems truly lie. Once that's cleared up, the city must draft up a long-term master plan that can be evaluated annually for progress or redirection. The master plan can be the measuring stick that lets the citizens know if their elected officials, the city administration, are truly digging a job done. In my opinion, these two projects will be money well spent for the future Lebanon stability.
Mayor, repeat it here. I'm Ron Miller, Ward 3. I'd like to tell a couple of stories, because I think that sums up the effort that's been made the last 15 years or more. 10 years ago, a plastic pipe company that was privately held came to town and wanted to put Lebanon on their shortlist. They did not come. And the reason they did not come was because the property owner changed their asking price. Now, that person had every right to change their price, and so the mayor and I, at that time Cantoon, sat down with John Hidd and said, "We need to be shovel-ready." That means everyone, city, property owner, county, state, parade to rock and roll. I think the results speak for themselves. City staff understands how to clear the way for a company to arrive in Lebanon and then not have roadblocks delaying the project. Now, let's bring that up to date. And I spoke with the head of the company that's going to be building the veterans home, and they also built the new school there, and he said that, "I just asked him, 'How do we treat you as a city?'" And without hesitation, he stated that Lebanon was the easiest city to work with on the entire West Coast. He further stated that Lebanon made it possible to access the site and begin basic work before winter, which will ultimately reduce the price of the project. That's your nice tax money. He added that the speed at which the city processes permits enabled him to come in as a little better for the project. I believe it went for veterans and for the taxpayer. Lebanon's economic efforts, I believe, have been deliberate and productive.
Might as well hang on to that mic there, because you're going to start with our third and final question from the Chamber of Commerce. What attributes do you want to see in Lebanon's new city manager?
Hold it a little closer.
Culture, microphone, culture, all of you, please.
Like this?
Jet bowl, glass.
Put it on your chin?
Which one?
Yes. Oh. So, you hear where she just said, "Which one?" Don't start my time yet.
30 seconds.
Oh. I just came up with, I mean, where do you start? This person will need to be involved in the community and the schools, just highly visible, all stratus, personal among all stakeholders, not just with council, not just with business leaders, but all the stakeholders in town. Creative, willing to take on the state and federal ABCs when necessary, but on the flip side, works to develop a relationship with these same entities. Work for economic development, using the existing and any other avenue to help Lebanon grow and be healthy. Be a manager, I think this is really important, develop staff. Be unafraid to address difficult issues. Here's a big one, challenge the council. Challenge the council. Yes, the city manager reports to council, he should be challenging the council. And lastly, just be a problem solver. Never say no, never quit.
I think the first thing we should see is a history of professional success in their previous appointments. Really, the big set of shoes to replace John Hidd, and this individual needs to have a proven track record of success in a similar environment. I'm not interested in going with the dark horse in this case. I'd like to see us choose the odds-on favorite and someone who has been to the winner's circle a time or two in scenarios like this. In addition, I would wish for this individual to be as strong in communication and transparency and communication at all levels. Lebanon residents are fed up with backdoor politics and hidden agendas. They want transparency, they want accountability, and information on what's going on in their city. If a candidate for city manager can't commit to these ideals, then we can't commit to that candidate. Finally, this individual must be a team player. Our city works best when it works together, and along with the mayor, the city council, and city manager, set the tone for the rest of the organization to follow. This is no position for an autocratic leader with a history of iron-fisted policies. Attitudes of teamwork and collaboration need to be two of their strongest attributes.
I swear, we do not copy off each other. Flexibility, absolutely. I'm all about accessibility, highly, highly experienced. I want to know the track record, I want to know why this person is leaving their current position. And quite frankly, I don't like when hired from within. That's not really an attribute, but that's just what I'm going to say. I want to make sure that if I call this person up, they get back to me right away. The position I hold at my job at Oregon Connections Academy, I'm an academic advisor, I have 24 hours to get back to a parent or a student, and if I don't, there's a penalty. And I think it's the same thing for government here. Also, I think it'd be lovely if the incoming managers maybe would take a pay cut from $112,000 a year, maybe reduce that a little bit, be on a probationary period, and earn that back with, you know, some tangible goals that they achieve.
I agree mostly with what everybody said. I think it's really important that you have a manager that can communicate well with people they don't agree with necessarily, and can lead a group of individuals, not just council, because it's important that this person lead council, but I think the most important thing we can look for is leadership skills. And leadership skills are really some of the hardest skills to screen for. When you're looking for somebody who has a good track record, you can look at where they've been and kind of see where their beginning point was, and where their end point was, and why they say they want to leave. I mean, you can look at some of those facts. Leadership skills is really going to take, I think we need that, and I think it's going to take exploring with people they've worked with, not necessarily just immediately worked with, but kind of exploring that down the line. And so, leadership.
All right. What attributes do you want to see in Lebanon's new city manager? The new manager must operate in a genuine, credible manner, ensure transparency and accountability for all actions. For example, the new manager should make all public records available for the cost of the physical copy, not the time staffs making or the sub-arbitrary level to inhibit inquiry. The manager serves at the pleasure of the council, and the council makes exact decisions for the manager to implement. Therefore, a council request for information must also be honored. With some city councils, the mayor and city administrator are working together to prevent the release of certain records that would show thousands of dollars of taxpayer money being used to benefit the taxpayer. Their unwillingness to produce records looks as though an awful lot of, they are trying to cover up something. I hope records haven't been destroyed in the process of cover-up, as had been done in the past. And she was talking about leadership, well, actually, you don't need leadership, the civic council would need him.
Toss out some words. My first word would be accountability, and I would say financial and statutory, meaning a person follows the rules and sticks to the budget. The other two words would be leadership, which has been mentioned quite a bit already, and management. And leadership and management are things that are tossed around quite a bit in books and things. What's the difference between leaders and managers? My favorite definition or description of this is given by Stephen Covey. He said, "Imagine a task, a crew task, to build a superhighway through the trackless jungle. The best manager is the individual who can organize and supply and inspire that crew to build more miles per day through the jungle than anybody else. That's a manager. The best leader is the individual who's ranging through the jungle ahead of the crew, climbs the tallest tree and says, 'Hey, wrong jungle.'" The city manager needs to do both roles. The city council provides overall leadership to the city at large. The city manager must provide that leadership to the city staff in the accomplishment of the goals outlined by the city council.
You might as well hang on to that mic, we're going to start with the questions from the audience. First question is, can any of the excess money from the general funds be put into the new water system?
I have no clue at this juncture. Without fully understanding the city budget, which I do not at this point, I can't answer the question.
This is something that I've been asked a lot, and the whole thing is, like they say, we can't do anything about the cost of the water and sewer bills, but we can watch how the city spends money, and if we can cut down their wasteful spending, we can pay, we'd have to pay less on sewer and water.
Do I understand the question to be, to assume that we have excess money in the general fund?
Excess was kind of inserted in as maybe an attribute, but can any excess money from the general fund be put in the new water system?
I guess, I can't imagine there is excess money, but that I, my understanding is the general fund and money you could spend all day long in water, but you cannot take water funds and spend them all day long, it doesn't go both ways. It doesn't go both ways. Money that is spent in the water system has to be from water. You could take, if we had, if we wanted to cut five police officers tomorrow, I believe, and I made the statement, that we could do that and say, and reduce our water bill. I'm not advocating for that at all, but I believe that that is, that is the way it flows.
Again, I don't know the budget is that big. I'm still going to bear my way through it. The only thing I can think of, as far as taking stuff from the general fund, I don't know, the only thing I can think of is a program that I mentioned, and that is voluntary donation from city workers from the water bill, from volunteers from the community for their water bill, and that can provide money to help some, and that's the only thing I can think of. I have nothing on the general fund.
I'm in love with you guys. I'm not an expert on the budget yet, but what I do know is that these water rates, the increases, have been brought on to get us to a point where we are actually a paid-for-service customer now, as a water customer. What that means is that the city used to subsidize the water with money out of the general fund, and there was up to half a million dollars a year, I believe is the number that we used to get subsidized. So now, by raising those rates to where they are, as high as they are, you will now pay for service by yourself, and Rebecca's correct, money can go from the water back to general fund, the water's enterprise bond, and it has to stay in the enterprise bond. Without the water, because I have the same thing, I've got two young girls, and it seems like our washing machine runs more than it stops, and our water bill is high, and it's difficult all the time. So I am with us, you guys, and I would be willing to seek out any possible solution to this problem, but unfortunately, as Paul alluded to earlier, they are where they are at this point, and it's basically, you can't unbreak the bill at this point. It's disappointing to hear that.
Last year's general fund was nine, one hundred forty-nine thousand. Of that, police was four million, five hundred thousand, so you can see they have a fine police department, which we do. By the way, they are getting set to hire some new tenants, so staff is being increased, which is very good. Of that, nine, of that nine million, eighty-two percent of the general fund budget pays for salaries and benefits. So when you look at the general fund budget, you really, if you don't reduce personnel anywhere, you're still going to pay them, still going to provide benefits. You really only talk in eighteen percent that you can have discretion with. And police come to the budget meetings, because this is the exact discussion we have during budget meetings. Council and the budget committee sit and talk about what can be moved around, what are we going to spend here, not spend there. I remember times gone by, we decided, do we have cops on the street, or do we have more hours at the library? And I said, "At three o'clock in the morning, if somebody's beating my door in, I'm going to call the police, I'm not going to call the library." And it wasn't a criticism of them, it's just a fact, so it's a balance and a dance that you do.